Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Illyria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda.
Good morning. Can we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Your dog, what? Welcome to Wednesday, December 19th, Board of Commissioners' meeting. Ms. Lori Kukowski has the dog and week.
Oh my, whoa. He's got a lot of energy. He's young, he's only about a year old. Cockapoo, cocker spaniel poodle mix, probably won't be shedding, so if you want a house with hairless dog, or no shedding, come here baby, come down to the dog pound, dog kennel, we have a lot of dogs to choose from. How many do we have there?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven or twenty-eight? And just think, for like $39 for a license and an adoption fee, you'll have a present to give to a family member that'll last years and years, rather than just, you know, kids opening up a present and playing with it for a week. This'll be a lot of joy for your family. Practically fully vetted, spayed or neutered, and also we'll give you a certificate to get some training. He might need a little bit of training, so come down to the dog pound. Thank you.
If you're viewing a dog at home now, call the kennel, make sure the dog is available, the dogs are gonna be available for adoption earlier, so.
Yeah, thank you. We used to make people wait until Saturday, so they had, if they saw this on TV on Saturday, they'd have an opportunity for that dog, but we do do a first come, first served basis, and rather than a lottery like we had done in the past, so.
Yeah, the one dog that I wanted to adopt, the people came from out of the county, they got in at 10:00 a.m. I believe they were from Ashibula, and they got there at 10:00, and then had to wait to 3:00 or close.
Yeah, so, good change. Madam Clerk?
At 9:45 we'll have a presentation by ODOT, unless you'd like to do it now?
If you want to, sure.
Kathy, you ready to do it?
I'm ready. Okay. My name is Kathy Sarley. I am the Planning and Engineering Administrator from District 3. If any of you remember Ken Wright, I've replaced him, he retired earlier this year. What I'm gonna present today is information from the Access Ohio 2040 study. It's the Long Range Transportation Plan, we update it about every 10 years. They did a survey of Ohioans, and this is the results of the survey. I'm going around to all the counties and presenting this. Okay, so today, I'm gonna inform you about the survey, and I'm gonna inform you how we're gonna use this to shape and influence the Long Range Transportation Plan. So this is the first public involvement that we did, was conducted this past spring. They did random samples of Ohio households, about 1,900, and they were able to take the survey online, on paper, or by phone. As I said already, it's the newest version of ODOT's Long Range Transportation Plan. The purpose is to identify and prioritize transportation items that are most important to Ohioans. We'll set the stage for policies and investment strategies, and it's gonna follow up a process referred to as performance-based planning. So they're gonna establish goals and objectives, and then the, the goals are developed first, and then objectives are more targeted, and will be refined as the plan progresses. And then, here's some results. Congestion and safety are the most important topics, followed by freight, public transit, linkage between modes, bicycle facilities, and access to airports. And the two top network priorities are highway and transit, followed by rail, bike and pedestrian, and small airport. And these next few slides are gonna show how the results by district, how that shook out. And as far as congestion, it was very important to the entire state, but extremely important to District 3, which is where Lorraine County lies, which is in that top portion, dark blue And then, safety was extremely important to the whole state, which is not surprising. And highway network, again, was very important to the entire state, but extremely important to the District 3 region. And public transportation network was at least important to everyone in Ohio. In District 3, it was very important. That yellow color is important. And the results of the survey actually coincided with our strategic plan very well. We had already had our plan before this came out, but part of our plan is to take care of what we have, so 96% of Ohioans think that's important. We wanna improve safety, 93% of Ohioans think that's important, and also we wanna enhance capacity, which 90% of Ohioans thought that was important as well. And this just shows that 62% of Ohioans think transportation funding should be increased over the next five years, but 18%, only 18% are familiar with how transportation is funded. So that leads us to the conclusion that the majority of the public doesn't understand transportation funding, and it provides a unique opportunity for ODOT to educate the public on that. So where does transportation funding come from, and where's the money spent on? The transportation funding comes from the gas tax, there's the state tax, which is about 28 cents, and federal, which is about 18 cents. And the next slide just shows where ODOT has spent that money over the past, from 2006 to 2011. The smaller green block on the bottom is operating, which includes, you know, wide range of things, not just payroll, you know, salt, building maintenance, you know, a whole range of items. And then, the dark blue center, that's preservation, that's really, that's taking care of what we have. And then, the smaller orange-yellow color on top is major projects, which, as you can see, has gotten a little bit smaller over 11, but we've found some efficiencies in operating, so if we had the 12 here, I think, you know, you see operating go down a little bit, and the major projects going up a little bit. I only have the 11. So, the next steps, the Access Ohio 2040 Committee will outline the transportation needs, estimate how much ODOT will have to address those needs, and they'll have a report by the end of the year, which Executive Management will use for budget testimony. They're gonna establish a game plan to address the gap between needs and revenue, and also they're working on defining the national, statewide, regional, and local transportation corridors in Ohio, which are still being identified, and then once complete, they'll document the needs and current conditions. And Access 2040 will guide transportation decisions by providing an overview of the transportation, economic, social, and environmental trends affecting Ohio. It will establish a framework for multimodal transportation system investments, and identify corridors where transportation system needs converge to guide future project decisions. It will inform transportation decisions by providing an inventory of our assets, forecast transportation conditions, needs, and costs, identify existing revenue streams and fiscal challenges, and develop some innovative funding strategies. It will support transportation decisions by documenting current ODOT programs, policies, and procedures for improving Ohio's transportation network, and build upon performance benchmarks for core ODOT programs. And then, finally, one of the objectives is to provide a forum where information on Access Ohio 2040 is readily accessible to the public. So there's a website there, there's all kinds of information there, reports, charts, newsletters, all kinds of information. You can also follow them on Twitter or Facebook.
That's all they sent?
That's all they sent? Oh, well, I had a little graphic of the freight network as well, which is just kind of interesting. I guess I can't show you, but what it shows basically is that for internal truck traffic, 71 is really the spine, which I'm sure you're not surprised by that, you know, connects Cleveland, Columbus, and Cincinnati. For kind of trucks just passing through, it's 70, 75, and 90. And it does show that some of the US and state routes have probably more truck traffic than we would've thought, so. What I'll do is, I'll get a copy of that and go ahead and send that to you, which is an interesting graphic, so.
Thank you.
Any questions?
No.
No, it just looks like you're doing what we're doing in a whackup. All the modeling and everything else where the needs are gonna be going forward, and funding issues, of course, so.
Right, funding's always the issue.
Yes, yes. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Under Resolutions Number One, Job and Family Services Bills?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Investments?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Advances and repayments?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Under the Auditor Point Craig Snodgrass, Acting Lorraine County Auditor, effective January 1st, 2013, until such time the Democratic Party announces its successor to this position.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Did you wanna say anything, Craig?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning.
First of all, I wanna thank you for your support. It's a bittersweet day for me, as we're gonna say goodbye to a good friend and mentor, Mark Stewart, been a great public servant over the 36 years, but I'm also very excited about putting my mark on the office and county government, and I look forward to working with each and every one of you. Please, I'll give you my cellphone number, my office number, I will try to make myself as accessible as possible with all three of you Commissioners. I think communication is key to running government and to try to be an effective office holder, so I look forward to working with each and every one of you. If by some chance I'm not available, Linda Keys will be my chief deputy, she's currently the chief deputy on the real estate side. So we have a lot of things to work out yet, you know, from that perspective, but Linda will be my backup in case you cannot get ahold of me, but I'm always pretty accessible. I look forward to it. Thank you.
The issue that we were talking about last week with the dog license, I spoke with the Commissioners Association, the Dog Wardens Association, state reps, and state senator, and it looks like they're gonna look at trying to change that down at the state, so.
That'd be great, because each and every year, it's a very cumbersome product or process by issuing a new tag. But again, the code calls for a new metal tag each and every year. Our license plates, they were renewed with just a little piece of paper, I mean, why can we not do that with a dog license? Would be easier for the dog owners, costs would be reduced from the county's perspective, and that would be a statewide issue, too, so I think it is a good process. Lorraine County is, we're a leader, I think, in the dog tag process, we're computerized, people go online, I think other counties are looking towards us as well, so whatever we can do, that would be a great step.
Other Commissioners on the board that I spoke to down in Butler County and that, and other communities, they're gonna also take a look at doing a multi-year license, too, if you wanna do that, to help save some of the work that you have to do at the Auditor's Office. So, I wanna say thank you to you, and also Jason for taking the time to spend, I believe, an hour that we talked about that, so.
We're very proud of our program. We've been on that cutting edge of the technology, and that's something I wanna continue to move forward in our office. Mark has put a lot of emphasis on modernization and the computer system, our GIS system is state-of-the-art. We have, our GIS guys do national conferences, they actually are putting on the shows, and we're gonna continue in that fashion, we're gonna continue to move forward, and this is just another aspect of it.
The only thing, I don't know if it was on our end with the dog warden or the Auditor's end, we didn't send out the reminder notices this past year, and it really affected our revenue stream, so in the future, I think we need to make sure that that's part of the process.
And I think in the past, usually after the first mailer goes out, and it did go out as scheduled, I think usually the reminder goes out somewhere around January, February, and I think we're gonna start to work on that, and we're gonna work with Jack a little bit, but right now, we're trying to scrub the database. As more and more people are applying online, we can reduce what we actually send out, so reduce the postage, reduces the amount of reminders, but we'd like to do that the first part of January, say, hey, by the end of January, January 31st, please get your tag, avoid the penalty, and we'll be glad to work with it. Plus, when you do your meetings, maybe remind people that January 31st is the deadline.
Right, I did that last, actually, I said December 31st, I got everybody in a panic, so it is January 31st.
But we have strong sales on the internet, it's been a great response this year. Each year, we're building, which reduces our workload, and it makes it much more convenient for the dog owners, because it's right in the system immediately. So it's a work in progress, but we're working there, getting there.
I think that program that we're talking about, too, is gonna help with sending out the reminders, since it'll be done electronically and you'll have all their emails.
Yes, so. But again, I look forward to working with each of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Under the Commissioners, authorize various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within jurisdictions in Lorraine County Commissioners?
Mr. Cortez?
Madam Commissioner, I do have a number of personnel issues, specifically at the county home, solid waste, Commissioners' office, and we do have some appointments that need to be made. Also, also, we have a, I provided you an executive summary of the labor contract yesterday, we need to discuss that more fully today, and I will be presenting you a contract for United Steelworkers of America that we need to talk about. As I told you yesterday, those negotiations were fairly concluded, so at the conclusion of our regular board meeting today, I request that we go into executive session, have those discussions, and all of those issues are allowable for executive session talks under the sunshine law. Thank you.
Authorize exemption of expenditures of $1,000 less from prior certification requirements, and this is the last time this will be done in accordance with Hospital 509.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Express Commissioners intent to conduct an internet auction for sale of unneeded, obsolete, or unfit county personal property, and calendar year should be 2013. Advertise in the Chronicle on December 8, 2012, and January 4, 2013, and this will be the last time this is done in accordance with Hospital 509.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Authorize County Administrator to provide and execute unnecessary documents, effective December 20, 2012, through December 31, 2012, for the year-end closed activity, including but not limited to transfers, advances, and repayments, appropriations, requisitions, travel, bills, payroll-related transactions, and payments.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. Cortez, you usually give us a copy of all those that you approve at the end of the year?
Except the one with my pay raise in it.
Yeah.
Yes, I do, and so I will continue that practice going forward. Thank you.
Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Preferably the reading and statement County Commissioners' meeting minutes of December 12, 2012.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Authorize salary adjustments of Illyria Municipal Court, effective January 1st, 2013, reflecting county's 2/5 share. Judge Gary C. Bennett presiding and administrative, bi-weekly rate is $973.08, and Judge Lisa Latgrace's bi-weekly rate is $950.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Authorize Commissioners Kayla Kukowski and Williams and County Administrator Cortez to utilize county's lowerment Visa card, and the amount not to exceed 5,000 expenditures are work-related to include CCAO and NAOC conferences, and for such items as food, lodging, telephone, gas, and oil, minor vehicle maintenance, emergency repairs of county-owned or leased vehicles.
So moved.
Second.
Are you guys?
I want discussion, can you take me off the resolution?
I was gonna say, yeah.
Well, here's what, let me explain why you're on the resolution. You don't have a credit card, I have the county credit card. If you remember right, a few years ago, the Auditor's Office wouldn't pay the bills when I used my county credit card to reserve rooms for you when you were traveling to conventions and training issues. So even, we had a big dust-up, and we were required to put you on before they would pay the bills, even though you don't carry the county credit card.
Good, okay.
So just under book housekeeping, then, to make sure we're on it?
Right, you know, but I don't know that that's still an issue. It seems, because now, I've used a card for other county employees since then, and there hasn't been a request to add them on to that. So let me explain our procedure here, is that, you know, we have the one credit card, when anybody's traveling, I'll book the rooms, and do all that under my county credit card, and then we'll submit the travel. Most times, we can get a check-in, and then we release the credit card. Sometimes, we can't get a check-in, and that's due no fault of anybody, it's just timing, and then we'll use the credit card, and then we'll submit the documentation and pay, for reimbursement, pay the credit card. So I don't know if we still have that issue or not, it's an older issue.
Can we ask the interim auditor?
I will look into the, I'll look into it.
Okay, it's not a big deal, it's just a practice we've been doing. I don't know if you ran into this, but down at the Commissioners' Association, the auditor actually cut us a check for, or cut the hotel a check that was too large, so then they had to go through and do paperwork in order to return it. I think- We've had that happen before, too. It's a standard practice, I believe mostly elected officials use it. For me, I normally travel with cash, so I wouldn't mind having this to just cover expenses for the county.
May I finish, I just never used one, so.
Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Approve the 2013 special revenue annual appropriation.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Kukowski?
Well, we need to-
This is special revenue.
Oh, special revenue, okay.
Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Approve the 2013 temporary first quarter general fund appropriation.
Can we move that to the end of the agenda, just get through everything else?
I was gonna ask you if you wanted to. If I can do that. Is that the pleasure of the board?
Sure.
Under Job and Families, authorize various personnel to utilize the various credit cards not to exceed 4,000, said usages for work-related expense, food, transportation, gas, and oil, motor vehicle repair and maintenance, conference, telephone, and lodging.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Enter into software maintenance agreement, Maximus Columbus, for Windows version of the program Exponenture Tracking System, effective January 1st, 2013, through December 31, 2013, and the amount not to exceed 2,150. Authorize Director to execute and amend for changes in program and content and increase value on behalf of court prosecutors approved those two forms.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Under Solid Waste, extend the contract with Chemtron Corporation Avon for household hazardous waste processing and recycling services from 2013, to be paid for the recycling services account.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. Bailey's on his way up to discuss this matter.
Good morning, Gordon.
We're seeing some increases here, and I'm not a magician, all right, but the total cost of these additional expenses is about $1,500 a year, is what we figured out the average was, so it's not that much. I know I brought all our contracts down in price, but now we're seeing the other side of the cycle, all right? So be aware, this goes out for RFP next year, we'll do mid-year, we'll do has-waste again, and we'll see what we can bring back. There is more qualified contractors down in the state, the EPA has approved 14, so that's some additional competition, so that may help us along those lines, all right?
Are you gonna stay up there for the next one also?
What's that?
Are you gonna stay up there for the next item also?
Yeah.
Okay.
Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Approve the MOU with OSU Office for Year 2013 for the compost education not to exceed $17,400, and will be paid in two payments, May and November, each amount of $8,700, and paid from the solid waste allocation account, and contains a 30-day cancellation clause.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes, Ms. Smitty Taylor has been providing us very good reports, and we will have a nice report in our ADR this year, the EPA, about their activities for us, so they do our composting education program.
Okay, thank you.
Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Under Clerk Courts, authorize Clerk Courts Nabokowski to utilize lowerment Visa card not to exceed 1,000 for conferences, food, lodging, transportation, telephone, gas, and oil, or vehicle maintenance, emergency repairs of county-owned or leased vehicles.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Under Children's Services, authorize various personnel in the children's service of the agency to utilize the agency's credit card for not to exceed $2,02500 for telephone, gas, and oil, minor vehicle maintenance, and emergency repairs of county-owned or leased vehicles.
I think it says $25,000.
$2,025,000, yes. Did I say $2,500? Sorry.
$25,000?
Yeah, because the director has a card in case he has to go out of state or something. It's been that way.
Okay, all right. Did I say?
Yeah, you did.
Okay. Give me a second?
Second.
Anything further? Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Under Common Pleas, adopt the Common Pleas Court, General Division Credit Card Policy, and authorize various judges and staff to utilize county's lowerment-issued Visa credit card not to exceed $7,500, said usages for work-related expense, food, transportation, gas, and oil, motor vehicle repair and maintenance, conference, telephone, and lodging.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Under Domestic Relations, authorize juvenile branch judges and staff to utilize lowerment Visa credit card in the amount of $1,000 to $5,000 for conferences, food, lodging, transportation, telephone, gas, and oil, minor vehicle maintenance, and emergency repairs of county-owned or leased vehicles.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Calo.
Aye.
Under the engineer advertised for bids for limestone aggregate for county highway department, notice due in the journal on January fourth and eleventh, two thousand thirteen and be open at two P.M. on January twenty-second.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Calo.
Aye.
Under the prosecutor treasure except in generalized adretec appropriation and expenditure report estimated by Lorraine County Treasurer and Lorraine County Prosecutor pursuant to the Ohio Revised Code three-two-one point two-six-one for the year two thousand thirteen. Revenue generated for two thousand twelve was six hundred and seventy-six thousand, two-hundred and seventy-six dollars and two thousand thirteen estimate anticipated revenue will be approximately six hundred and sixty thousand.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Calo.
Aye.
Under the sheriff, authorized sheriffs to many and Lieutenant Debbie Reinhardt to utilize a Visa credit card not to exceed twenty-five hundred for conferences, food, lodging, transportation, telephone, gas and oil or vehicle maintenance and emergency repairs of county-owned or leased vehicles and payment on internet services used in the criminal investigations.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Calo.
Aye.
Grant sole ownership of K-9 Ozzy to Deputy Brian Barnes. K-9 Ozzy has been serving the sheriff's office since two thousand eight. His age and performing daily activities, he retired December thirty-first, two thousand twelve. Deputy Barnes will release all claims in agreement to identify at a cost of a dollar.
So moved?
Second.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Calo.
Aye.
Appoint Phil Ars to many as acting Lorraine County Sheriff effective January first, two thousand thirteen until such time his term commences on January seventh, two thousand thirteen. Sheriff will retire December thirty-first.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion.
Yeah, and Jerry, we talked about this, I know a lot of people are questioning it. One, there's nothing illegal with this, correct?
No.
And we, I know the answer, I'm just asking you to clear it up. If we don't approve it, he's still gonna be sheriff in January when he gets his warrant.
On January seventh, yeah.
So if we don't approve it, we just don't have a sheriff technically until that time.
For seven days, yes.
Right. Okay. I've had a lot of calls from my office about that, so.
I think we need a sheriff.
Yeah.
I, I do too.
Yeah.
No, I just, you know, people were wondering if it was illegal and so I just wanted to bring that up, so people are aware it's not. And I think the sheriff does a good job as well.
Hmm, I agree.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Calo.
Aye.
Okay, we need to go back.
Back to the, approved, approved the two thousand thirteen temporary first quarter general fund appropriation.
Uh, we received additional or updated version of the budget from you Lisa to update the coroner's request and was there any other changes on here?
Do we have a motion right now or are we in discuss?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm, uh, make a motion to discuss or go forward?
Second.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Well, we're, no, we're discussing.
Sorry.
Making unanimous, we're done. We're done.
We're done.
We have eight million dollar carryover, we don't need to do any cuts.
Yeah, no, no. I love it, Mr. Williams not saying we need cuts.
Wow, that's a first.
That's never come out of his mouth.
Well, you know.
Discussion.
No, we're still short, so we have to balance it.
Right.
Can you rescind your second? Can you rescind your second?
I rescind my second.
Thank you. Can you rescind, so we can get rid of this vote and start all over?
Yes.
You guys went into a vote without.
Yeah, we can't vote, we don't have a balanced budget.
Right.
Right, so can you rescind?
I rescind my fir-, my motion.
Clerk, could you please read the resolution again?
Approved the two thousand thirteen temporary first quarter general fund appropriation.
Okay, Lisa.
Aye, here.
So moved?
No, you didn't.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion. I can do the clerk's job too, I lose my assistant, we don't need the clerk now either.
Oh, I don't think so. I beg to differ on that one.
Yeah, slow these people down, Teresa.
Okay.
Now discussion.
Lisa.
Um, yeah, we got the, the new budget here. I'm looking at the two thousand thirteen.
I think the only changes made are the ones that we moved out of the budget commission to make sure we funded the coroner in full. I think is the only changes, is that correct, Lisa?
Yeah.
We'll come up in case there's other questions through this budget.
I'm looking, um, mine's actually the one I copy I have. It's at fifty-four million, no, that's gone down. We're saying it's at fifty-three point seven, correct?
Just under that correct? That's the one you should have.
Right.
Did you see that this morning, Neil, did you get the email?
Yeah, I got it right here.
Oh, okay, got it.
Got the wrong.
The changes?
With the changes on it, so.
Just.
Basically, we need to come up with ninety-four thousand dollars.
Just for, to let you guys know too, that based off of this information, the first quarter that would be passed today, um, without any changes that you guys are probably gonna make, are is thirty-six million, four hundred and seventy-seven thousand, six hundred and eighty-seven dollars for the first quarter.
Cause all we hold back is salaries?
Correct.
Okay.
What's that number again, Lisa, thirty-six?
Thirty-six million, four hundred and seventy-seven thousand, six hundred and eighty-seven dollars.
I'm sorry, what was that for?
That is the first quarter as of right now that would be passed.
Okay.
Cause we just hold back the salaries for the second, third and fourth quarter.
Right, and what we're looking at now, just overall, in order to go through, Ohio Revised Code have a balanced budget and it's ninety-three thousand dollars. I've been going through and looking at this here and projected revenue for next year is what?
About forty-four point three million.
And what's the, uh, projected revenue for this year?
Roughly forty-six point four million.
Forty-six point eight, so it's actually higher than what we're projecting for next year.
Yes.
And we know that the, we have another casino that's gonna open.
Well, that number's already in here, the four million dollars is already in here for our revenue next year.
Right, but that could actually go up or it could be lower. We don't know what the local government is, we're putting at twenty-five percent reduction, it could be fifteen percent, ten percent, whatever.
No, it's already twenty-five percent, that was passed in by annual budget time, we don't know what's gonna go for in, forward.
July.
The governor asked for more cuts or not, we don't know.
Could get cut again in July.
Right, and that's what I'm talking about, you put that at twenty-five? That's what we talked about yesterday.
We're at two point six million, but that's still, it might, the Auditor's Office actually gives us that estimate.
Okay, you were basing it for July's at twenty-five percent reduction, correct?
We've taken those cuts into account, but again, so I first expect a change based on what the governor does.
Right, we're only through June thirtieth of two thousand and thirteen.
So you're going off of what the governor passed, it wasn't what you were assuming it could be in July?
Correct, I believe that's how the auditor based his estimate.
There's been no assumptions that I'm aware of.
Well, no, it's just when I asked yesterday what the assumption was, it was the twenty-five percent.
Twenty-five percent is the other half of next year, because they worked on that July first to June thirtieth, so we don't know, the governor's already asked for ten percent. Unless, unless Mr. Riddel back there has an idea of what Mr. Kasich's gonna do.
No.
Hi Jeff.
Good morning Commissioner.
But we don't know what he's going to do, I know he's asked his departments for freezes
Right.
and ten percent cuts. So we could have a ten percent cut, which would be another two hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
But that's not included in the.
Right, and we don't know what it's gonna be, and we don't know what the real estate, or, um, not real estate, what the, um, sales tax is gonna be or anything else.
No, never do.
But we believe that there's gonna be several million dollar carryover at the end of next year, correct?
My guess is always somewhere around eight million dollars, Mr. Cordez says slightly less, less based on our discussion points yesterday.
And I, I think we're going to be looking at the history, you're probably right, every year we've had that. So my proposal would be to go through and get the hundred thousand we built and reduce that from the Commissioners' budget, take a look, it's a temporary budget, see how things are going, look at the, um, our processes, see if there's any other ways that we can reduce it without reducing services or doing cuts, maybe being more, um, efficient changing processes and go forward.
What, like what kind of processes are you thinking about?
Well, I, well, the reason I wanna look into, I did, I went through, I made a few phone calls yesterday, I wanna take a look at Turning Point, Stepping Stone and, uh, the pathways, um.
Those are services though.
Those are services.
And journal entry.
Right, that you're going through, make reduc-, or consolidate, actually go from having three facilities down to two facilities. And I've talked to some people that are involved in that, they'd like to bring that up further, but obviously I can go through and get all the details in one day.
Well, I have a question though. That was part of a journal entry, we can't stop the funding revenue goes to that, that's a judge's journal entry done.
Well, the thing is, we know that that's not required by Ohio Revised Code.
Well, a lot of what we do is not required by Ohio Revised Code as well.
I know that.
But we do it because it's needed and necessary services like transit, like economic development.
Well, that is one thing that we need to look at too.
It's not mandated, but we need to do that.
We need to look at the casino routes for the buses too.
Right.
I have a question of our legal though. Jerry, if the judge gives us a journal entry to fund and we choose not to fund, what is our process as Commissioners to pull that funding back? Like the Turning Point pathways have been shown that they are not, you know, required, but they have given us an entry to fund that, what is the process that we don't fund it and they shut the place down the end of the month?
Well, I would anticipate that if the Commissioners just refuse to fund it, that the court would take action to enforce their order.
So we have no way of saving that amount in our budget, let's be honest. I mean, regardless of when you look at, that's a long-term process, that doesn't stop the funding of going to half a million dollars to them, Jerry, is that correct? They put an injunction on us and it's done. You know, we keep it going.
I would assume that would be the process that they would, they would engage in.
Right, but we do have new judges coming in, in office as well, so if we can bring in some of the staff that have been affiliated with those services, we may be able to look at reopening the girls detention home in order to close down Turning Point and having staff move there, which would be a reduction in, um, we would be able to consolidate the areas together. It's just some, uh, ideas talking with multiple people that used to work there, that they're, um, giving me on how we could reduce costs there.
Well, I have a question, Tom, and get, let's get past all the bullshit. The issue coming down is that we're gonna lay off our assistants and that's where you're doing it. You knew the judge's entry earlier, you've known what the budget's is gonna be, where we're gonna be at somewhat, and again, I don't know the amount of time you spend at least on the budget or in the Auditor's Office, we still gotta get to zero. Everything you're talking about is long-term and working with the judges and working with things. Where do you plan on finding a hundred and some thousand dollars to make sure we have coverage?
We could go through.
Show me a legitimate place that we can find a hundred thousand, cause I'm not thrilled about losing my assistant either.
No, no, actually.
Regardless of what the papers say or anything else, when we were out talking yesterday in between break, Brad actually asked me, I said, well, how many committees Ted serves on? I'm on twenty-six boards and committees statewide, so I have a very busy schedule with that and giving her up is not in my best interest, but we need a hundred grand and we gotta find a place to cut it.
Well, we, what we can do, because we are looking at Commissioners' budget, we have authority over the Commissioners' budget, and I spoke with Mr. Cordez on it, we know that we're going to have money that's going to be returned from even our departments.
That's in our carryover.
That's in our carryover, so we're, if we're gonna have an eight million dollar carryover projected for going into two thousand fourteen, you really don't have a hundred thousand dollar deficit. You're saying that we're going to carry over eight million dollars going into two thousand fourteen, but you wanna cut a hundred thousand dollars now to have a balanced budget, so we should get rid of our assistants. I'm saying we should just go through our budgets, Commissioners' budget, reallocate the funds that we know are gonna be true, the hundred thousand, so put it at eight million. That's seven point nine million in that we would have for the carryover and, well, base it on a quarterly budget. If you're having eight million dollar carryover, you believe for two thousand fourteen, how do we have a deficit?
Because that carryo is, carryover is part of our revenue.
For the following year.
It's considered part, I mean, our budget is not the, our revenue, it's our revenue plus the carryover, that's what we budget for, not just the revenue.
And I, you know, if we were talk, if we were talking millions of dollars, I would say, you know what, yeah, well, you're right, because our carryover, we're now cutting into a huge portion of our carryover that's going to affect us in two thousand fourteen.
Well, really, we are a lot shorter than the hundred thousand. We, we haven't done any improvements, capital improvements, what we used to pay cash for, we're now gonna have to borrow to, to fix roofs and, and fix our buildings to update things, um, so, you know, transit is at what, so bare minimum, we are still very, very short, a lot shorter than a hundred thousand, but this is just, this is just the icing on the cake, this is not.
We're down a couple million dollars in revenue from thirteen.
But, okay, so you think it's gonna be more?
It, it could be, it could be more, that's why we do a, a quarterly budget, that's why we call it a living document, it changes, we have to look at things quarterly to see where we're at.
Yeah, and I mean, we're looking at going through and giving pay increases to the county employees and don't get me wrong, I, I know there are good employees here that need that and deserve that after having a pay freeze for many years.
Right.
But we're looking at going at a certain percent and that's where I came up, you know, I think two thousand fourteen, going into two thousand fourteen, we're gonna be good. Two thousand fifteen is gonna start getting, uh, questionable and that's where I said, you know, for me, when we were looking at the raises, I know it came late, but just looking at the stuff of going out, you know, two, three years is where I said we should do it on incentive, if the county does well, employees get a, a good increase, if they're not doing well, then they, they can get the increase, and I know the board rejected that, but it was just a way.
You just brought that up last week after the.
After three, four months of negotiations.
Right.
But before it actually went through.
It's all at the last minute, Tom.
Uh, you know.
That's the issue, it's at the last minute, knowing this was all coming up and our revenues weren't gonna match next year, I mean.
And knowing that we're also going to a quarterly budget, a temporary budget.
We always done a quarterly budget.
Right, so you want me to go through and solve all the issues, but then you.
Not all the issues.
What I'm saying, I think, right now, this is a very hot topic for the commissioners.
You've, you're making a very hot topic.
What I would like to see, just to try to get calmer heads in here, is to go through, pass the temporary budget, do a reduction, because if we eliminate-
Where are you gonna take the hundred thousand out?
We're gonna take it from the commissioners.
But where?
Okay, we can go through the Record Center. We know that there's gonna be money that's returned there every year. Take a look, that's why I had Lisa go through and do the numbers as far as how, what percent comes back every year, you know?
That went through November? Did you do one that went all the way through December?
No, did not.
They were all through November, which has two or three more payrolls.
But that goes against what you're saying, that we're going to have this big carryover then because of-
It's not a big carryover, Tom, it's the average carryover.
It's operating money that we have to have at the beginning of the year before our-
That's two million dollars.
No, seven, six or seven million dollars is what we used to always have to have.
To open the doors.
Right, to open the doors in January.
Lisa, I'm gonna bring you up, because we talked about this, and we said for opening the doors, you told me it was two million dollars. Because when we had a discussion, I told you, you know, I thought it should be more, and you said that two million dollars is more. So are we at two million dollars, or are we at seven million dollars?
Well, when we, I believe this was maybe six weeks, a couple of months ago, I sent you all that information, and unfortunately, I don't have that with me, about how much we needed to open up the year. And when we figure that, we take into account the first month. You've got two payrolls, you've got PERS, you've got utility bills that have to be paid. And I think we came up, and I honestly do not know the figure off the top of my head, I believe it was a little under two million.
For the first pay, through the first couple of weeks.
To, because you have to figure, not to interrupt you, Commissioner, but you have a sales tax coming in in January, you know, you do have some revenue coming in.
Right, and that's why I said two million dollars.
But property taxes aren't until like March or April.
For the pass flow, in order to start off and for expenses, about two million dollars. And, you know, we're looking at an eight million dollar carryover. And we don't know what's going to happen. And I think it's going to be better, because we have seen a better year this year. And that's one of the reasons that I am, you know, in favor of giving a pay increase to the employees. But I think the best thing to do right now is go through, because commissioners, we have control over it, take a look at the departments that we have, go through, redo the reductions, and then based on a quarterly budget, if we see that different things need to happen, we can make that. And what it does is it gives us time to go through, kind of calm down, over the holidays, we come back, we have our administration meeting, and then we'll have, what, a first board meeting, the twenty-third of January, and we can talk about things. Right now, I think it is a very hot topic. I think it's gonna divide the board. I think we are looking at a good number going into 2014, and we should just take it from the commissioners, since we have control over it. And if we decide that we're going to go with the assistants, it's still under our control.
I think it's, it's trying to set an example for other county departments, letting them know that we are willing to make the sacrifice, just like we did when we gave up our pay raises.
We've made all the sacrifice, as you stated.
Right.
We've made the cuts last year, ten percent.
Correct.
Instead of five percent. I think we do have that.
I think we do too.
And I think with what we've had done, is the reason that we can go through now and take a look at giving these increases.
And that was, that's how this all got brought up, when you said, we're gonna give these, if we're gonna give these pay increases, then we need to find the cuts to offset those pay increases.
It was a talking point that I brought up. Like I said, my concern, the one thing I don't want to do, is I don't want to go out and give pay increases, and then we have to let staff off, lay 'em off. Because that one, it doesn't benefit them, and it doesn't benefit the public, as far as public services that are provided.
You can't stymie the employees for five years without giving them a pay raise.
I'm not disagreeing with you.
So even if somebody did have to be let go, then that would have to be the outcome.
I brought up the other idea, as far, the board shot it down, and said, no, we're not gonna go there. That was the end of discussion.
As far as what?
As far as, you know, looking at, trying to give them like a half percent pay increase, and if we do well, we carry over so much money.
That's not true. You're not, that's not true. You brought that up last week after the negotiations were almost finished.
I'm not disagreeing with you. I'm saying I brought that up, it was shot down, and looking at the numbers, I'm saying that we go through it. You haven't heard me once say, no, we're not gonna give the pay increases out here.
Heck no, you can't, you can't keep our employees down like that for so many years.
Actually, Commissioners, we could cut the hundred thousand out of our commissioners' accounts. We have gone to executive anyway, and that's where we talk about personnel, that's where it belongs at, not all over the floor.
Well, actually, the personnel, when you go into the executive session, it's gotta be related to certain things. It's not actually, we're just gonna do it for budgetary issue.
We didn't say budgetary. We passed the budget now, it's done. We can go argue the personnel issue, based on balancing the budget afterward.
Well, and what I'm saying is, I don't think we need to go through and do a reduction in personnel, because if you're talking personnel, you're talking about letting someone go. I say we go through, because we have to pass the budget, I say we go through, we do the hundred thousand dollar reduction here, we don't let anyone go, and we see how it goes quarterly, as you always stated. It's a living, breathing document. We can make changes every quarter.
Lisa's listening to us.
I got hearing aids for some, you know, for a reason. I do listen to you. I do challenge you on different things, but I disagree.
Well, I think you're, you're making this a hot topic, like you said yesterday, you don't trust our department heads to give you information, or whatever, you think it takes longer for you to get it than for us to get it. I have to wait for Lisa to give thing, you know, get things to me, and I, you know, I don't think anybody treats you any differently.
When I work on something, right, and I'm working on projects, if I'm working on different things at the state, or you got, you get in the early stages, you have people that you want to have complete confidence in. And Neil does a great job, and I'm sure Tony does a great job for Ted, and there are things that you want to have held confident until it moves on. That's what I'm referring to as the trust. Do I think they're gonna go out and slash my tires? Hasn't happened in two years, so I don't think it's gonna happen. Jim, I know it's happened to you, or Keith at least. So, good point is, right now, or at least I wasn't as hated as much as you, but that could've changed. But I think we can go through, and that's why I said, let's, let's try, go through with the approach. Let's go and do the reduction, because we know we're going to get certain dollar amounts back from different departments that are under the county's control.
You can't do a budget like that.
We've done the budget like that for many years.
Never did, no, in assumption. Never did on assumption. That's why we did our cuts in eight, nine, ten, eleven.
We've done cuts, after cuts, after cuts, every year.
When we did the cuts for the board of commissioners, and it was at ten percent, we knew that we could go through and do the reduction at ten percent, because it was gonna eat into the extra, or the additional allocations that was gonna come back anyhow.
What we did is we didn't replace bodies, Tom. Jim, you'll probably jump in on this, how many vacant slots did we leave, so we were able to do that? And, I mean, help me out, we didn't have economic development people, I mean, we didn't backfill things. How many months and months we could get to our budget, so we made sure we had a responsible carryover?
We have attritioned a lot of people. And the number's in excess of twenty. It's probably in excess of thirty, but I don't have an exact count, over the last four years.
So you take just your report and transit out of the deal that we're funded through general fund dollars.
Let me do this. 2010, Record Center returned fifty thousand dollars. 2011, fifty thousand dollars, at the end of the year.
End of the year, okay.
Okay. Capital improvements, 2010, forty-four thousand. 2011, one hundred and seventeen thousand. Building and grounds, 2010, three hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. 2011, three hundred and four thousand dollars. Office services, now I know this one's gone down, because courts are using it, but we do still have about fifty-five thousand. But there was a hundred and forty thousand dollars, and then a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Custodial, sixty-seven thousand dollars, a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. I mean, they're a different thing, there's money there where we can say, we have it, we could balance it by doing the reduction and appropriate the correct amount of funds. And then you have your balanced budget, and you meet the Ohio Revised Code.
Tom, we have to make those cuts anywhere, somewhere, because we've gotta get down to the number.
Again-
For instance.
That's where we're looking, and we're doing this without-
Tom, I got a question. Hang on, give me a second here. Are we looking to pass a budget for next year? Are we looking to talk about personnel issues out here? Take your pick, we gotta do one of the, the Revised Code says we have to pass a balanced budget. So we gotta take a hundred grand somewhere. Are you willing to take it out of the other elected officials?
Right now, with what I see here-
No, the other elected officials. Let's start with the departments, okay?
Well, we, besides the cut that you did, half of it, I think we could go, I think we could go through and do it through the commissioners, see where it goes, because we're going to have, we believe, such a high carryover.
That's where our budget director needs some direction.
Right.
And everybody has to have. So if the board is agreeable, right now, to lowering a hundred thousand dollars, get to the balanced number, and everybody else fine, we can then pass a budget. Then we'll discuss what we're gonna do with the hundred thousand dollars, and if it's a personnel issue, it goes in the back.
Well, I think we know-
I'm not battling out here about bodies. Now, you put my assistant through it, you brought it out of exec last week, when it was a talking point, you brought up cuts, Lori brought up, and Jim recommended, you ran out to talk to our assistants. They got no clue what was going on.
Well, you know what, when you go through, I talked to my assistant on it, and it wasn't even, it wasn't even a personnel issue. We're saying that we're doing it for budgetary issues. That was the claim.
Letting go of personnel and budget.
Budgetary issues are not part of executive session.
They wasn't budget issues, it was personnel.
You said you were cutting it for budget.
No, you asked for cuts. We didn't. You asked for cuts back there.
We talked about, you, I said if we're gonna go through and look at it-
We were talking about labor negotiations, and we were talking about labor negotiations and possible raises.
And raises.
And then I brought up the questions, I brought up the question, how are we gonna pay for it going into the further year?
So we had to make cuts to offset the amount of the raises, and that's when I brought up with, Mr. Cortez had mentioned back in March.
So I brought up that, the, it's about one point seven million dollars, one point five, one point seven, depending on how it goes. And we're talking a hundred thousand dollars.
That's only for this. We still are, you know, for services, people are looking to us to provide services, not to make our life nice, okay?
It's not to make our life nice.
Well, let me finish my sentence. If there was a place where we would take one of our assistants and put them somewhere, if we were going to do that, or replace somebody with our, I would say telecommunications, do you know how hard it is to get through to anybody in this building, or the Justice Center, or anywhere in this county, now that we don't have any telecommunication people to route calls? It's a nightmare. Now, that is service to the community. That is a position, two positions that we eliminated, which eliminates service. If we got, if we had to lay off our assistants, nobody is going to notice that in the public.
Well, I disagree.
We will, because we'll have to do more work on our own.
My office takes a lot of calls from the public, and gets involved in resolving issues. We had an individual who needed help with a furnace issue.
We had one yesterday.
Right.
Yeah, we get those all the time.
He went through, he did the research, and was able to get the information, and go through and help to make sure she understood what was going on.
And I suggested, Mr. Cortez suggested eliminating all three of our assistants back in March, and I recommended hiring a part-time person to, for all three of us to share, to take those kind of calls for us, on a part-time basis. I don't believe that, I mean, the clerk said only five counties have assistants to the commissioners, five counties. So it is a luxury to have an assistant for each of us. It is a luxury.
I think-
I've done it both ways. I've done it with the assistant, and I've done it without an assistant. And it's really, really nice to have an assistant. It's great. I loved having Sherry, and I loved having Joyce, but it is a luxury.
Well, again, I think instead of going through and doing personnel cuts, because I do believe Commissioner Calo does need assistance, I need assistance. If you don't want an assistant, that is up to you.
I'm not saying that. I'm saying we should make the sacrifice.
I, if we're, I'm gonna go back to one-
As recommended by your administrator.
I'm gonna ask you one basic question. If you're looking at eight million dollars going into next year-
You can't look at that, you can't, you can't count on that.
You don't overspend what your house is bringing in, Tom, because you, based on doing 2014, with having a revenue stream of approximately eight million dollars going into that, it's just how much has already been done.
If we don't have a revenue, yeah, if we don't have the carryover for next year, if everybody spends what they're given, then we can't count that as revenue anymore. So, I mean, then we gotta make more cuts. So, that's what I'm saying, show the rest of the elected officials and everyone else in the county that we're willing to make the sacrifice, and hopefully, everybody else will follow suit and see that we are not joking when we're saying, we're hurting here. We've been hurting for a lot of years, and that's why our services have gone down the toilet.
And also, like I've said, as long as I've been in office, we don't have an expenditure problem, we have a revenue problem. And that's what we need to address.
I wish we could raise revenues, but we've tried.
And I'll be perfectly clear, I'll state it again, I'm not going to impose a sales tax. So, that's all.
We know that, Tom. I'm saying, that's our issue. That's our issue.
So that's why we need to make the hard decisions.
We don't have those sixty million dollars anymore. Like in the old days of Mr. Moore was here, seventy million dollars in revenue, when we had all the high dollars.
Well, you did a great job going through and handling the budget. I give him a lot of credit.
It's easy when you've got money. Twenty-five million dollars cashed down on the Justice Center, love that. Wish we had that now.
But-
Do you have any comments on, this was your suggestion?
Well, I just think we're circling the track. Let's get it done, whatever you're gonna do.
Right, cut a hundred thousand from the budget, get us to the number we have to, the balance, leave the other elected official alone, and we'll fight over where the hundred thousand's gonna come from.
Well, I think if we're gonna fight about it, we should actually fight about it out here and be transparent in front of the people.
We have to get out here and do that. First, if we're gonna do a personnel issue, that'll be executive. Second of all, we can finish the conversation after, in fact, we can go, meeting next Wednesday's fine, too. It doesn't much matter at this point. But Lisa's gotta do something with everybody else in the county, to know what their budgets are going. We've given soil and water money this year, full budget, correct?
Look, if there's, if there's extra money there, and you're gonna start counting at what you have at the end of next year, I want some maintenance people, I want some custodial people, I want some transit people, I want some airport people, okay? You guys do what you want with your assistants, but you've denied me employees based upon the budget. So-
Well, you know-
Well, but, we don't have employees because of the way the budget's been done. So we're gonna go through and talk about personnel. And we've laid off a massive amount of people. We need to talk about that. So we can't talk in, in a very narrow view. We need to talk in a expanded view of our employees, because we have, we did a lot of layoffs over the last couple of years.
Well, he wasn't here when we did that.
And if we're returning money to the general fund, then you're gonna start looking at what we're gonna return to the general fund. I wanna start talking about those employees.
Not arguing. You're more than welcome to, Mr. Cortez, if you tell us what you need.
That's why I brought up about the telecommunications. He wasn't here then. It was nice. I mean, they were someone that welcomed people to the building.
I mean, the switchboard operators.
Pardon me?
Telecommunication returned a hundred and thousand dollars in 2010.
But that's our phone guys. I'm talking about-
And a hundred and twenty-three thousand. Well, you said telecommunications, that's where I went.
Telecommunications now is the people that do our phones. But we had two, two and a half, I think, people down in the lobby that answered phones and directed people where they were going.
You had switchboard operators.
Switchboard, yeah.
Okay. The, the, again, I'm not gonna get in, I made a recommendation in March, but however you sort that recommendation out. My recommendation was made because we were looking at a second round of cuts in the commissioners after we have done cuts. So I informed you of my view of where we were at at that point, and then we stopped talking about cuts. And it was left alone.
Until last week.
Okay. The, but if we're going to look at the things that have come back to the general fund from our departments, we gotta, why are we staffing those departments then? That's your decision, not mine.
Because we have to make sure we have a responsible carryover going into 2014, like we always have.
Well, I will make a motion to reduce the commissioners' allocation by one hundred thousand dollars.
Excuse me, or whatever it takes to get to the even number.
Is it exactly one hundred thousand?
No.
Ninety-three thousand.
What is it, Lisa?
Ninety-four thousand, four hundred and twenty-two dollars.
Ninety-four thousand, two hundred and twenty-two dollars.
Four hundred and twenty-two.
Four hundred and twenty-two.
Ninety-four thousand, four hundred and twenty-two dollars.
And that's full expenditure, make sure anticipated budget. Tom, she made a motion.
Second.
Discussion.
I would just go on record again, I don't believe it should be personnel.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Okay, are we too long?
Go ahead and get that out to everybody this afternoon, Lisa, so they know what they have to prepare for.
Yes. We are on Mr. Cortez, County Prosecutor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Obviously, I just repeat my request for an executive session. I'd like to make a little point out that former Commissioner David Moore's in the audience today. Hi, David, good to see you. And of course, Mr. Verdel's sitting next to him, a good friend of mine. So, nice to see you guys, happy, have a happy holiday, and happy holiday to everybody else out there. We're not gonna meet again, I don't believe. So I hope everybody is enjoying the season with family and friends, and have a safe and wonderful lead up to the new year, and a safe new year, and we'll see you again in January. Thank you.
Mr. Inassistants, County Prosecutor.
Commissioners, I've continued my discussions with the State Building Department regarding the hearing on the decertification. Basically, what they would like us to do at this point in time, and what I have indicated to them is that we're once and for all going to make a decision regarding whether we're going to change it or close it altogether. I've also been meeting, and Mr. Cortez and I met with a committee from the townships and informed them of what we're going, going to be doing. But in any event, what we're going to have to do is schedule public hearings to have public input and make a decision. The state is kind of wanting us to do that in January or February, but they would like us to set up specific hearing dates, so that they know that we're moving forward with that. So I would like to ask the commissioners that we go forward and do that, perhaps for late January, early February, because we're gonna be gone for several weeks here, that we go ahead and set up the hearing dates on that.
Excuse me, Jim, would we be ready by the twenty-third to do the public hearing?
I think so. The, the meeting that we had-
I've got, I mean, I've got the dates worked out, if you guys wanna either do it February fifth, which would be the first day.
How about during the eve, I thought we were gonna go to evening meetings, wouldn't that be our evening meeting anyhow?
I know nothing about an evening meeting.
We talked about this before the election, that we were gonna go to evening meetings like-
We said we would do a couple. We did the one, we said we would do a couple for, for about two or three months and see how it worked out.
I thought it was six, but-
Maybe it was six. I was compromising somewhere in the middle.
So we could have, we could just have our evening meeting then, and that would make it a lot easier for the township trustees to get in here.
Actually, we wouldn't have a problem with that. I'd like to have them here as we're doing this. That would be fine with me.
I would recommend the public meeting being the evening.
Would that be Wednesday, the twenty-fifth, then? I mean, let's get it going.
We gotta make sure that another township doesn't have a meeting that night.
They don't do Wednesdays. Mondays and Tuesdays.
The, the-
And not have a meeting during the day that day, because it was kinda silly having two meetings on the same day.
Well, let me suggest this, since we have a big issue this time, I would suggest we have a meeting that morning.
During the day, okay.
Clear our docket, open it up for that issue that night, and stay focused on that issue. I believe there's gonna be significant input. They have a committee working on it. We had our ups and downs at that meeting. I think Jerry and I held our own with about fifteen of them, but we were being pushed back, just having a little fun. But there's a lot of diverse opinions coming out of that, and positions. Now, they're not gonna be prepared to present anything to the board, and they may have an alternative they wanna present, and I told them, the board will be willing to look at alternatives. The, and, but we needed to do this because we were being pushed through the appeals process, or the, you know, the hearing process, to get it on the docket. So they know we're going to do this. We were upfront about it, so that they know that we're not trying to do an end run on them. So I, but I would suggest that we schedule the meetings, we have it in the evening, they can come up, they can talk with us while they work, and we do both of those processes concurrently to a conclusion.
Commissioners, I think they would be okay with the first part of February, in fact-
Oh, would the state be okay? You said January.
Well, January, February, I think they would, and the townships indicated if I could buy them a little time. I mean, I think if we set it like, I don't know what dates we're talking, like the fifth-
Well, I was going to give the commissioners the option, since we're gonna vote on those Tuesday meetings, if you just wanna do that on a Tuesday, since that's gonna be a big subject anyways, we could do it either on the Tuesdays, or we could do it on a Wednesday. So my first thing was going to be February fifth, which was Tuesday, and then the next one would be February nineteenth. Or, we won't do a board, actual board meeting till February thirteenth, and then again February twentieth, because we've got a lot of-
And February twentieth is starting to get pretty late.
What about the-
So we can move it up to January, which would be the third Tuesday, if you guys are going to agree, you know?
Well, we said Wednesday evening.
We could do Wednesday evening.
Two in one day.
Right.
Do our regular meeting.
A regular meeting in the morning.
Loaded already.
So on January twenty-third, since that's a regular meeting?
Yes.
At what time?
Jerry?
What time, seven o'clock or six o'clock? What? Six?
Six is fine.
Six?
Jerry? Would that give the townships enough time if we do the January?
Yeah, at least.
Or you wanna do the following?
Well, let me point out, the meetings are pre-functional.
Berry Leaf?
Yes.
Yeah.
That's, I know, that's the township's police district name, but-
The administrator for Carlisle's still here, he shook his head some open- He shook his head some open.
No, it's just that Barry is chairman of the police district.
Oh.
Yeah, we could do it that. We could work around that.
Yeah, let me explain. It's pre-functionary. You're not going to be making any decisions. It's going to be for the public to talk to you. Maybe some trustees come in. But they already have a group that's working on their behalf that we're actively engaged with. These are just processes that we have to go through. So I don't think it's usually that important. As long as we exhaust those processes, when we come up with something, we don't have to start all over again. We're done.
What, are we going to have the hearings two weeks apart, Teresa?
Do they have to be?
A week apart.
We couldn't work with the 30th and the 7th or something like that?
That's what I was kind of looking at. Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
I was just trying to push it up to...
No, I think if we did, I think if we did the 30th and then the first week in February, it would be okay.
Yeah. So 30th...
That'll work.
At 6:00 PM then. And then are we going to do it the secondary during the day then?
Because that being the last, last Wednesday of the month is probably not a meeting that people have a lot of conflict with.
But you don't want to have back-to-back meetings on it. I would want to at least go like a week. That way, if somebody's vacation, something sick, they could go back.
It is a week.
Well, yeah, I would say the 30th and the 7th. I thought you said the 1st. I'm sorry.
No, 30th and the 7th.
That would be a week apart.
A week, okay. I'm sorry. Ms. Hunter?
Teresa, to make our quote, we need to have two meetings on the 7th also, a morning and an evening. Because I know we're running close with the dates this year with when our organizational goes by Revised Code and...
Oh, I still, I still, yeah, I still recommend that you clear your docket in the morning in case it ends up being a long meeting in the evening.
Six?
6 o'clock.
6 o'clock.
Well, January 30th, wait a minute.
January 30th is the one.
January 30th, we've had, I mean, right now, there's a schedule that Johnson Controls is coming in for a presentation that morning. So...
The 30th?
Mm-hmm. But we're going to do just this in the evening, correct? Okay. So then the next one would be February 6th. Are we doing that during the day? Will we...
That's board's pleasure. And I think if you do one in the evening, one during the day, you're capturing a larger audience.
Because the only other thing on the docket that day is the fracking presentation.
Yeah, we could do that during the day. We will have one at night, one during the day.
So 2:00, 6:00 at 10:00 AM.
And basically, what we would be doing would be considering changing the jurisdiction and scope of the building department.
My own motion?
Do we need a motion? So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
That's all I have, Commissioner.
Commissioners, report.
Well, I have a proclamation for my buddy Joyce in the matter of expressing our best wishes to Joyce Parks on her retirement from the Lorraine County Commissioner's Office. Whereas Joyce Parks began her employment for Lorraine County on January 9th, 2002, as assistant to Commissioner Betty Blair. And whereas Joyce then transferred to Lorraine County Community Development Department on January 1st, 2011, when Commissioner Blair did not run for reelection. And whereas Joyce on December 1st, 2011, transferred to the Lorraine County Commissioner's Office as assistant to Commissioner Lori Kokowski. Whereas we are recognizing Joyce for 10 years of service with the county. And whereas Joyce is a caring, dependable worker who will pitch in wherever help was needed, all her untiring efforts, dedication, and humanitarian kindness, good fellowship, and congenial sense of humor with working associates will be remembered. Whereas Joyce will be able to enjoy life by catching up on her soaps, figuring out puzzles, and relaxing with her dogs. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners express appreciation to Joyce Parks for service rendered to this county and its citizens. Further, be it resolved, the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners and staff wish for Joyce and her family a very healthy, peaceful retirement as she pursues her hobbies and interests for many years to come. Signed, all three of you commissioners. Come on up and get it.
Nice job of writing that one, Joyce.
No, she didn't do it. She did it.
Come on, Joyce.
Women of little...
Everybody's a politician.
Yeah. That's right. I just want to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas and a safe and Happy New Year. And make sure you come down to the Dog Pound and get a dog for your family.
Busy week. I know the budget stuff, but NAWACO, we had some changes to our bylaws there through the nominating committee. unanimous vote. We changed Mayor Jackson's designation to alternate so his chief person could be the board member. And based on nominating committee, which will be going to the board, we'll be moving up an entire slate of new candidates. And we went through different processes as how we're going to work on the mission statement of the board and what our values are and what we want to address, similar to what O'Donnell just did today. Again, a Merry Christmas to everyone. And please keep in your thoughts the tragedy in Newtown, Connecticut. Unbelievable. So, thank you.
Well, as at NAWACO as well, want to thank the Avon Lake Utilities, Avon Lake Mayor and North Ridgeville Mayor for discussing issues and for North Ridgeville Mayor with coming up with a solution that will be brought up at the January NAWACO meeting regarding sewers. The Monday, actually, I had a very enjoyable day. I went to Amherst High School and was able to talk to the government classes there about government. Talked about the importance of it, the ethics of it, and having the right people in office. And very, very good class. Actually, Ted, you had the most name recognition. Unfortunately, Lori, they referred to you as "that chick."
Well, my son graduated. The only reason I have name recognition is my son played soccer there before. You're like, oh, my son.
So you were referred to as "that chick." I thought that was very good. So first period, great class. Unfortunately, it's at 7:30 in the morning and you have a politician there talking. So most of them fell asleep. The other ones wanted to poke and prod me, so that was good. Third period, started off slow. It was a half break. They went to lunch, came back with energy. And we really got into some good discussions. So I do appreciate Amherst for allowing me to come in and talk to the government classes. Something I really do enjoy, talking to the younger individuals. The, the numbers here, you know, it, I'm going to go back to it because it is, it's something about doing a service for the people and having the assistants here to help out to provide the service for the county. And my last thing on is, we're looking at $8 million going into 2014. But we still want to go through and give, we're concerned about the budget, so we're going to give raises. But then we're going to go through and cut assistance at the commissioner's office. I disagree with it wholeheartedly. I think we should go to the temporary budget. I think we have done some good things here. And that's why we are giving the increases to the employees. But that's politics, people. Unfortunately, that's what it comes down to.